Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. It's just a little bit after 7:00. On Monday, May 13th, our regular committee meeting night, we have four committee meetings to be going on. And I think Steve Patterson's committee is going to begin. Then we have Finance and Personnel. We have Planning and Development. City and Safety Services. I'm going to make an announcement. City Council will be hosting a meeting with President McDavis and some of his compatriots, a luncheon meeting during June, July, or August. Calendar is being passed along to council members. Just fill out the times you're going to be gone, you're planning to be gone during those months. And then we'll choose some times to ask the President what's good for him. So that's coming around. Just kind of pay attention and fill it out at the same time. Okay. We are going to begin this evening with our Transportation Committee. Mr. Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of weeks ago, I mentioned for the first time the, an event that will be hopefully evolving throughout the summer and will occur August 10th, which is Bounty on the Bricks. We have asked Susan Mitchell and Cheryl Sylvester to come and give us a brief presentation on the concept and the ideas for Bounty on the Bricks here in Athens, Ohio.
Over here.
Sure. Yes.
Is that okay?
Sure. Yep.
My name's Cheryl Sylvester. I've been in Athens as a student since 1980 and never left. So my love for the community is as strong as anyone's. Steve, thank you for starting our cause here a couple of weeks ago. Just a short story so that you can get our vision of what we're planning to do. This winter, on our ever-loving Facebook, if you will, there was a posting, and this was the picture, from a little town in Tennessee, Jonesboro, Tennessee. And somebody had posted it, I can't even tell you who it was at this point, and it is a farm-to-table dinner that they did on their main street. And I saw it, and the vision just popped, and I said, "This is Athens. It looks like Athens." The only thing they don't have are brick streets, but it is a small town.
So ours will be prettier.
Yes, with a thriving farmer's market. But it's, it just hit me. Well, I let it settle for a little bit, and a couple of people, Susan and I, talked about it. Wendy Jackmas from the Chamber kind of chimed in a bit, but we kind of sat on it for about six weeks. When I got back from a little vacation, we got Susan Urano and the Foundation pulled in. And we are thrilled with this event. The planning is going well so far. It is going to be a benefit for food security in the county. It will be through the Foundation. The Foundation's going to work with Southeastern Ohio Food Bank to develop grants that will go to various pantries, to the food bank distributed amongst our community. Our goal, we're hoping for about a $30,000 goal. That is with a match from the Heritage, is it the Heritage Foundation? The Heritage Foundation is going to match whatever we raise, which is awesome. And we're using, hopefully, Chef Alfonso from Hocking. He is, if you've ever Googled him, he has a heck of a resume, and he loves to locally source his food, so he fits in perfect. What we are asking council, of course, is to close the first block of Court Street from College Bookstore down to the Courthouse, and it will be a Saturday evening, August 10th. I think we're thinking 7 to 10. We will have light entertainment. We will have no amplification system, no stage. It will be just kind of wandering, maybe some jazz players, quiet music. We are doing Jackie O's local beer, hopefully some local wineries, and hoping for your support. Questions? Or Susan, anything that I missed?
Our goal is to raise, through fundraising, through ticket sales, of people that come and dine with us would be $15,000, and then the Heritage Foundation would match it. So it would be $30,000 to our local food banks, which the Southeast Ohio Food Bank said they could make sure that just the Athens food banks get the money. So we would be helping people that don't, who are not fortunate enough to get meals on their tables every day like most of us are. We would be helping local farmers, and we, of course, want all the food local, the beer local, the wine as local as we can get it. And we want a great spirit of the event, and we would like all of you to attend, everyone in the audience and everyone on council, because it will be Athens spirit at its finest, too.
Yeah, it will. It will. We're doing one long table down the middle of the street, so we're not separating, we are, we actually are not selling tables, if you will. We want people to buy their tickets. If they want to buy a group, that's fine, but we really want to make it community-oriented. So you're going to come, you're going to be, you might sit with people you know, you might sit with strangers down the street, but that's what we want. We want it to be a community event. So we're excited. Yes, Jim?
Cheryl, what time do you see that you need the street closed for setup?
Well, at least a couple of hours, I would say. Now, you know, we've got, we've got a commitment on tables and chairs. We've actually got someone heading up our volunteers that will come and set that up.
It takes us a little time to get that done.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, at least a few hours, I would say, because we've, you know, Jackie O's, and again, I don't know their process yet of setting up a couple of bars, you know, getting their kegs tapped.
It is, remember, it is August 10th, which is one of the slowest times of the year. But my understanding, based on talking to Paula Heran Mosley, is that we should give it four hours?
Either side of the event.
Either side of the event. So that would mean if the event's at 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2 o'clock, and then 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. So 2 to 11.
Yeah. And I'd say the cleanup, of course, is going to go much quicker than the setup. I mean, once the setup, we've got a decoration committee, so they're going to be there wanting everything just right, and once we're done, you know, it's tear down and get out of there as quick as possible.
Does that timeframe seem okay with the administration?
It does. I'd like to check with Engineering Public Works, who'll do the majority of the traffic closure and all that, so.
We know that this has to come to committee and then go to three readings of city council. And we would like to know all of your opinions tonight, because with your blessings, which we hope we'll get tonight, we wanted to ask you if we could do a save the date. In order to get people to come to this event and support this event and help the poor in Athens County, it's kind of nice to have a save the date. And, of course, we didn't want to do that without your consent.
Right, right. Because the last reading is, would be what, the end of June?
June.
It's cutting it tight for us to keep planning and committing.
And, and selling tickets, of course.
Yeah.
And the ultimate goal is not only having a great event that we all love, but also to get food to hungry people, and the more time we have to sell tickets, the better.
What part of Court Street?
The first block. College Bookstore and the Courthouse.
It's the flattest.
And our, we hope, we hope, unlike, unlike the picture, we're very hopeful that we'll have two rows of tables, and that we will, you know, our goal is 30 grand. We hope to end with more than that if we can sell more tickets.
And you're anticipating how many people at what price for the tickets?
$75 a person, and...
$270, I think, was where our budget was worked up on.
Yeah.
270 tickets.
If we get 270 tickets sold, it would be 15,000, once costs are accounted for. But, of course, we hope to exceed that.
What was the date again? August?
August 10th.
Is your hopeful date?
Yes.
So I'm looking at the calendar. It would potentially be, third reading would come up June 17th.
Correct.
So for your save the date, gives you some time?
You feel we should wait till June 17?
Well, no.
No, okay.
We can do whatever, whatever is needed.
Okay.
Because I understand now that you have...
Right. It's a lot of marketing, a lot of committing from the farmers and...
Again, they're going to procure a Class F license for serving liquor, and the other suggestion would be concerning whether you want to make the parking garage free or not. That would be the other aspect you want to look at.
We would truly appreciate that, since obviously it would be great.
But $70 a ticket, that might be...
It would be nice. And the other thing is, if any of you are involved with small businesses in Athens, most of us really struggle through August, and if you gave free parking, many people might stay and go to Jackie O's, go to Tony's, go to various businesses that are open. And that really sometimes helps people make the, make a difference on whether they survive the month of August, many small businesses. So the free parking might cause people to stay in town. And it's adults uptown. It won't be students, and many might stay because it's adults' virginity.
And the other concern, of course, if, and I am sure we will have some older folks attending, so to offer them free parking convenience, boom, right around the corner.
Yeah.
And we'll have some hosts right on that corner coming out of the garage, so.
Sounds like a great idea. Certainly, in terms of what it would do for visibility for the community, raising the need for food and money, money for, for our food banks, my only thought would be is that whether or not the $75, I mean, that's not, that's just a comment on the side, is whether that's a little steep for some people to do. I know it's a fundraiser.
You're right.
It's for an event, and I'm...
We've talked about this, and some people that want to be involved but can't afford the $75, they can always volunteer and be a part of it. That's what I did before I could afford to.
Yeah, yeah. And we, checking against, we've got a really diverse committee working on this, and so going around the table and events that other people have either chaired or been to or been involved with, 75 was probably average, unfortunately, for some of the other events in town. So to make our budget, kind of had to put it at that, so.
And to have the fine dining that, it's going to be a meal well worth that, could be from our local farmer. And not only are we giving money to the food bank, but we're buying local food, locally-sourced food from the farmers, and from a corporate farmer. And we want to be able to give Chef Alfonso the funding to buy the food, too.
Sure.
And again, people, you know, students would not be able to afford this, but one of the people in charge of student volunteers at OU said RAs are getting in the night before. And this would be a perfect group of people that could join our community by volunteering. And they've already, OU has already offered, some people from OU that work with volunteers have already said, "We'd love to get the students that are here early, training for fall to involve." And these are probably amongst the most responsible people.
I could see, you know, if it's successful, what a grand way for students and community to interact. If there were some other, you know, like in the future, maybe a different variation on it where students could afford it.
Absolutely.
Just because I, you know, just from the turnout on Beautification Day.
That was incredible.
It really was. And I think there are, there are many students. I mean, 1,200 people in one afternoon certainly indicates that students really do want to be more part of the community, so.
I was so impressed with the amount of people out there. They were not only cleaning Lloyd Avenue, which is my little alley behind my street, others knocked on my door asking to donate to the food pantry. That is incredible, aren't we? I mean, that was, students at their finest.
I know you might want to explain a little bit the contingency plan, weather contingency plan as well.
Yes, well...
We don't want to think about that, because it's quite dependent on weather originally. It won't be this beautiful. We won't have a picture this beautiful. And we're hoping August, we won't even have to even have the contingency plan, because August is usually more predictable. But we did let Paula Heran Mosley know, because this is a huge undertaking on her part to shut streets down, that we will look at the weather report on Monday and let her know if we need to move. It's not an event that can be postponed, because we'll have already bought the food, we'll, you know, and the tickets are sold, so it's not something we can say, "Show up next Saturday."
Right. And the students will be rolling in town.
Yeah.
Once that weekend is over.
But we also can't put the, the safety of the guests in danger, if there's lightning expected. And it's not like Halloween and Boogie on the Brooks and many other events where we close Court Street, where people just move into businesses. So we, thanks to the city and Rich Campitelli, we plan to move it into the gym at the community center. But again, we hope we don't have to go there, because that would, it wouldn't be as beautiful, it wouldn't be as nice. But we would still be able to help the farmers and help the food pantry, which is our ultimate goal.
And the gym is something that's easily reserved. It's, they're not, according to Rich, of course, other people want the meeting rooms for other reasons, but the gym, so it's on reserve now.
Any other permitting, though, that we might have to work on?
Wendy Jackmas is in charge of some of that permitting.
And we jumped, we've jumped that hurdle already. I forgot to tell you that. But, yeah, two diff, we're going to have permits for both locations, and different organizations are going to apply for them. But hope, again, I, if you don't have a contingency plan, it rains, so by having this, hopefully the weather will be on our side.
That's right. This is going to be, I, when I first saw the images of this, it was just, I don't know, kind of a beautiful thing to look at and think about in the city of Athens. I think that something like this is very fitting in that time of year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you would have three ordinances up next week, and it'll be the closure, the free parking, and the vending, because they, they want to have vendors that are associated with their activity and a lot of those things.
Wouldn't we have to do something with the alcohol?
They all get the license.
That goes actually to the police chief and myself.
But the allowing, oh, usually we do a no glasses on, so since it's going to be wine... We're just doing wine by the bottle. Right, so we're going to... And no, and just tap beer. Right. So we, usually it's four ordinances for these things with the glass, okay.
Usually it's what? Four, because of the glass-free zone.
Actually, five, the noise.
They're willing to go glass-free zone.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't need noise. We're willing to go glass-free, except for bottles. The wine bottles will be implemented.
But they will, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl, so I'm really glad you're here, too, is where you can serve the wine, a bartender can serve the wine, and they would just have the plastic.
But not combined a lot.
Oh, okay, we're going to sell by the bottle, too.
Right, yeah, we're just selling by the bottle, just easier.
Really, if you shoot me by the mic, I'm sorry, if I do it, just. I hope you don't mind, but if you really want, unless you have to do that. Halfway between the mics is...
Okay. Anyways, we are going to do by the bottle, seems to be the easiest, takes a little pressure off the bartender, and it makes it a little nicer event, we thought. And then, don't feel so bad that you're drinking your wine out of a paper cup because you have a bottle. It just makes it, just makes it a little nicer.
And we're using bamboo plates, which are recyclable, really beautiful bamboo plates, so it's going to be good for them.
Doing sustainable dinnerware and all that.
And sustainable dinnerware. That's silver, so it's still pretty, but it's recyclable.
No one can speak, like, on behalf of council on how we'll vote, but is there anyone that would see a problem with approving this? I mean, I think it's a great idea and something that should easily pass council based on our history.
Right. And I really appreciate your planning efforts. It sounds like you're covering all bases that are Athens-friendly.
Yes.
And that sounds really good.
So do you think we're safe in saving the date?
Yes.
Can we save the date? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Paula. Paula's been a champion, and Steve Patterson has been a champion. Thank you both, because they, you know, when we, when this was just a dream, they both made, brought it to reality more than anybody. So thank you very, very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do we have to have something else on the committee agenda? No? So we're going to move on to Finance and Personnel. Chairman Chris Neisler.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have about seven items. I don't think any of them are very complicated, but we want to keep council member and the community informed about different projects that are going on. The first one is the wastewater treatment plant, and we mentioned last week that there is a charge made by the Ohio Water Development Authority, and it's 0.35 percent charged for the overhead expenses, including legal and financial services for the amount of money that we're borrowing for our improvements to wastewater treatment. And we were informed last week that that amount will be $65,023 that we will be needing to move forward in an ordinance so that we can pay for that and move the final paperwork on the loan into place, so that we're moving along in a timely fashion, especially since we're moving dirt over at the wastewater treatment plant.
So that needs to be appropriated from the, what, 758 sue debt fund, correct, Kathy, and transferred to?
Transferred to 750.
To 750.
Okay. Thank you.
Cover the bill.
Second item is the Southeast Ohio Regional Jail, and Mayor informed us earlier this year that the rate per day for prisoner had increased from $51 to $53. But we have more recently been informed that the new rate will be $58 beginning on May 1. And the estimates, at this point, we have $46,000 in the, budgeted in the account for prisoner sustenance, but the fee could be closer to $52,000 by year end, meaning that we will need an additional $6,000. Now, Mayor, I'm a little unsure, is, are we just giving an update at this point, or would you like us to go ahead and appropriate that $6,000?
We should start, start rolling, just because it's going to come out of the general fund, it's coming out of 101, 106, for the SC court system. And again, really what we're doing is we're looking at the, we're doing, if we run through past two months, or rather, we're looking at the past two months or three months of bills, the average between 4,600 or 4,700 to about 3,200. So it varies from month to month, it costs. But if you break it down, I say, we appropriated 64,000, 46,000, sorry. If you do one estimate, the low estimate's about 48, the high estimate's up 52, so somewhere in that range. In either case, we're going to be lower, we're, you know, we're going to be, we have, we're going to be charged more than we have appropriated.
Okay.
So we should prepare for that.
Okay.
How much, again, it depends on prime and underestimate. Do you want, would you think the high end or the low end at this point?
I wrote 6,000 down from our meeting. We just have it in there.
Okay. 6,000, put in 52, which would be the high end, but that's, may as well go on the safe side.
I think we'd be better now, right, where all the money's there and not give us the impression that we have it for something else.
Not so much that it's going to keep anybody else from doing anything, you know, later in the year.
Okay.
We can look at our bills as time goes on.
That way we'll be covered.
Okay. Are we about where we were last year? Similar or up?
Well, again, it went from 51 to 53, so everything's gone up from the start of the year.
Well, right, because...
In terms of what?
Numbers of...
Of people, prisoners.
I don't know offhand. I don't, I look at the bills, I don't look at the head count. I guess I could go online and check it out.
Right.
It's been decreasing. I mean, basically, if we look at December's, December's cost was up 4,700. The bill that was paid in February was 4,100 in March, no, Feb, yeah, March was 3,200. But I would not assume it's going to keep going down. Again, March, May 1st, they were going to bump it up by about $5 a day.
So the total cost might go up a little bit, but, yeah, it might be interesting to eventually find out how many people, see if the numbers are going down.
I just think that would be nice to know. In addition, obviously, it's going up in cost, so we probably need a little bit more money in there, but it would be interesting to know if they're seeing more people. Maybe it's some people are in there longer. I mean, that, you know...
They're still the same people.
It's still the same people, yeah.
Well, my understanding currently in Columbus, they're looking at some different sentencing guidelines, which would possibly increase the number of people that are held at regional and county jails.
Yeah.
As opposed to the state jail, you know, another, another way of them, you know, poisting their costs onto the counties and the regions. So I know that the prosecutors, the state prosecutors were concerned about it and some of the evidence, but I, it's something they're discussing.
Yeah, they're shifting the sentencing guidelines downward.
Yeah. May offset any lessening in people who are not going, from just general misdemeanors.
There are other variables, too. If we reach our capacity in terms of beds, if I understand it correctly, and again, this is, I get the second-hand request, this is not our jurisdiction, so speak, yours or mine, they, we have to buy beds from some other organization, other regional jail, and that costs a little bit more each time.
Thank you. Next agenda item is city vehicle release, and we do have, one, two, three, four, five, looks like five items, five vehicles that we will be disposing of. One is a 1989 Chevy pickup truck from the Parks and Recreation Department, another a 1985 Chevy diesel pickup from Lands and Building, a 1996 Ford F-150 from the wastewater treatment plant, a 1995 Jeep Cherokee from the lab, a 1997 Ford Crown Victoria, and I'm not sure what department that's from. Is that maybe code or the police, police department?
Public Works, one of the La Bombas that we used to hear about that are driven just to do errands and that.
Okay.
Been replaced by a used Ford Focus.
Okay. And then there's a Chevy 2003 Chevy Impala. And am I understanding right that we're intending to donate that to the Coolville Fire Department, Police Department, excuse me?
That's the request that the police chief has received. We donated one in the past to Albany Village, and then we donated one just this year, it was actually from last year, to Oblenus Hospital Security.
Okay. And, and the city does, just by way of general information, have an equipment donation policy. And so my only query about this is it does specify that they complete that donation approval form, and then it goes to the Service Safety Director for final consideration. So just, just so we're following our own policies, that would be helpful. Yes, auditor, here?
You, maybe we're getting to this, but after we had our meeting, after we got that original email, they added another vehicle on there.
I did include the 1989 Chevy pickup truck.
Joy, say that. Okay. So there's, so the one that we want to donate, anyway, I thought you said five vehicles, so it'll actually be six.
Oh, excuse me, six, yep. Three, four. Yes, you're correct, it's six. Thank you. Okay. Any questions about that? The University Estates Assessment Process, which we have been talking about, these are a series of roads in the University Estates development. A portion of that has been accepted by the city, but there are other portions that are still privately held and are not accepted yet. And part, it's been a difficult situation because the roads very definitely need repair. They will eventually become city roads, probably, so we've been working through the assessment process with the property owners. Earlier in the year, approximately 75 percent of the property owners concerned did sign documents stating that they were interested in moving forward with this. We have three citizen volunteers who have agreed to serve on the Assessment Equalization Board, and that's a volunteer board. They meet, they review, they look at the maps, and if anybody has any concerns or raises an issue about the amount they're being assessed, then it goes before that board for an appeal. The hope is that that equalization board will meet the first week of June. So we have three ordinances that need to move forward now for that process. One is the Assessment Equalization Board that I just mentioned, authorizing that. We have another ordinance that will be authorizing the bid, and we do need to know the account number, I believe, for, so we can let the clerk of court know.
Do we need one authorizing the loan first?
And then, and then the note.
We have that paper.
And we do have that from the Legal Counsel, Dennis Schwann.
Okay, I'm assuming it'd end up in, are you talking about the fund line? I assume we'd come out of Streets, yeah, Streets Improvement.
So will it be the Street Rehab, the 572, or?
That would work.
Okay.
What do you think?
Okay. All right. So we'll be seeing those appropriations. The other one is, well, the one authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids. The sum that we've entered at this point is $720,000 total for that. That sounds, I saw an earlier document that said 715,700, but... That sounds, I saw an earlier document that said 715,700, but this may have a small contingency.
Round it up.
720,000?
The auditor will probably determine that fund line, so that's...
Because we're borrowing the money upfront, it doesn't really matter if there's not enough to appropriate in the street fund, which seems more appropriate to me, but...
So you think 220 rather than 572? Okay.
Okay. So it'll be fund 220? Okay. All right. And I've mentioned tonight for our general discussion, the Columbus Lancaster Road, we will have an assessment process that will be moving forward for the sidewalk portion of that project. And you might note that at this point, we are doing the engineering for the project, and that is being done in-house. So the Lancaster Road sidewalk assessment will follow much the same process that we did last summer, when we were doing the improvements on Carpenter Street, and we also did improvements, I believe, on Grosvenor and Morris. And looked at all those sidewalks and said, well, we're doing all the other repairs for water line and pavement and curb, and that, at the same time, it makes sense to do the assessments for the sidewalks. I believe that we'll probably be following our long-term sidewalk inventory that we set up, where we surveyed every sidewalk in the city and marked them that they were either red in bad condition, or yellow in moderate condition, green in good condition, and from that, then they make a determination of which areas of the sidewalk need to be repaired. So, once again, the same kind of two or three-step process, where citizens will be notified, and then also the appointment of an equalization assessment board to look at, in case people want to appeal the assessment amount that's been made, and then probably a bid then for the repairs for that, yeah, authorizing for that. And, yes, Mayor Wilds, something?
The information meeting that's coming up, 21st, May 21st?
On May 21st, in the Dedins Building, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. There is a...
3:00 to 6:00.
3:00 to 6:00, excuse me, okay. So that would be a good time also, citizens and businesses and business owners alike, everybody's invited to go and take a look at the design plans for that, and that would be a great opportunity, if you have questions, to go and ask. I imagine that Jessica Adine and Andy Stone would probably be there and be able to help in reviewing the design.
Yeah. And I don't think construction will start till after July, since money, the public works money doesn't, isn't available till July 1st.
Right, okay. So the only thing we'll need to determine, the final details on the assessment process, is how quickly that needs to move forward, so that we're, we have all the legislation in place when they do begin in July. I'm imagining it's sooner rather than later, so. Okay. Parking lot lease renewal. Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you. This is just, this is a renewal of the First Presbyterian parking lot, which is 1113 North College Street. The renewal, or the lease is currently at the amount of 41,792 a year. That'll go up 3% annually for the next three years. So we're looking at 43,046 for 2013 to 14, 44,337 for 14 to 15, and then for 15 to 16, it would be 45,667 dollars in terms of increase.
Any questions from councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Goss?
This is a high expense every year. Have we ever attempted to purchase that parking lot, or a portion of it?
Not in, to my knowledge. We have an ability to offset that, up to $33,000 by what we rent out, which we lease out. And then, of course, what we're purchasing is the spots for the police department there. They did agree to waive the parking, or, excuse me, the repaving, because every three years is a little excessive, and have just requested some striping or painting this year, so.
I think the only way we detain that is if we try it by eminent domain. And if you want to take on a church by eminent domain, you're welcome to do that.
We do make...
I'm not even sure of the procedure, but I'm sure it's something we, we don't want to tread on.
We've never asked them if they would sell it to us, or what the price would be.
As far as I know.
Okay, so that's an alternative to eminent domain?
We could always ask, yes. What do you think the price might be?
Do we do make some back, because we have it metered?
Yes.
I'm saying we offset, it still is a cost.
Yeah.
Because the fact that we, we don't own that property.
So what's the offset?
33,000.
33,000 here.
We're spending, what, 43, right now?
Yeah.
So 10 or so a year?
10 to 14,000.
So, right, what we would need, yeah, I mean, point, good to have that point for discussion. It would be, yeah, if they would even be interested then, then it would be, obviously, we wouldn't have the money, so we'd have to borrow it, so the cost then, long-term, would be the interest on borrowing money to buy it. Something we could ask. The last agenda item that we have are some personnel issues. And one of them is for a posting for an electrician trainee replacement. And if I'm understanding right, there was a, another, it's not, it's a replacement, but it's also, is this a reclassification of a...
If I may, council some years back passed a soft hiring freeze, so this is informing you of these vacancies. The electrician trainee retired, and there was a request to have two electricians, but upon review of the job descriptions, I've determined that we're just going to go forward with the electrician trainee model that we have in place now.
And then we also have some other vacancies, a program specialist at the community center, and that's for the childcare programming, a police officer vacancy, and a request from the community center director, Rich Campatelli, to add a fourth seasonal worker. They've been, had quite a few requests, and with all the projects they've been doing at our different sites this spring, and they also have a, an employee, he, excuse me, an employee who's out on long-term leave, so.
That last item does require a change in the staffing ordinance. Auditor Hex reviewed with her deputy director the salary line items, and appears that he has unappropriated balances that could, if necessary, if we need to...
Right. They, they might have enough money in their budget as it is now, for, we're talking seasonal workers, so it's not the rate of pay or full-time, but they do have unappropriated money, if they need a little money at the end of the year. I guess Rich put that in his email, he wanted to make sure that he would be able to get extra money if needed, but they have that.
Any questions? Any miscellaneous items? Any other items?
No.
Okay, sure, we're finished.
We'll move on to the planning development committee. I'm going to begin with the discussion of review of code enforcement, and I think...
Mr. Wilson?
I'm going to discuss this this evening, especially, most recently, the last few months, in light of the campaign that we had going on. And I think this comes up every few years, when we have a campaign, is concerns come up regarding code enforcement. And many of us have worked on committees that help, have helped in that capacity, such as trash and litter, and a few years ago, we had a signage committee that helped, everybody was pretty up in arms about the four rent signs that were going out on everybody's front lawns. So we actually had a committee that worked on that with owners and people who lived in the neighborhoods, and came up with a pretty good solution to that problem. So in meeting with some community members, we discussed an idea of having an ad hoc committee to talk about code. We've had several of you in our audience who have been here to discuss different options for the departments, and different ways to look at that. So I think that we would really like to put forward, council would, a group of citizens and administration to talk through what these issues are, and at the end of that, come up with a plan to present back to council and the administration regarding what the concerns are. And my hope is that we'll have some meeting of the minds, so to speak, and come up with, you know, really brainstorm and come up with some ideas, because I know that this has been a real issue for many of us for a very long time, and, and how to do that. So I'd like to present tonight, I've spoken with Chris, and two of us from council will probably sit on that. Myself and Mr. Reisner would like to sit on that with the group, whoever is interested in doing that. And we need to kind of sit down and determine who that is. So if you are interested, we would like you to contact the clerk of court, or council, and let her know. But for sure, we see maybe Paula and the code director sitting on that, on that committee as well. So, any comments, or?
A question is, I know you're talking about code enforcement, is this, would this be addressing code as well? Because there's been several issues over the past year dealing with code, as opposed to just code enforcement.
Such as balconies, or what?
As a, a number of things, a number of things.
I, I think he's referring to interpretation.
Interpretation, sure, exactly, exactly.
I, I think that one could, when looking at code enforcement, there will be discussion about needs for improvement in code language, and that would have to go before the planning commission. And so that would be definitely part of the conversation, but it's not, I don't see it as the focus. And it's more the, the nuts and bolts, looking at, at process and those sort of things, and trying to, to develop solutions that are across the board. We did talk about having the, the mayor be able to put a couple people, so it's a joint task force, a joint committee that would also, and I'd like to see it just, like the sign committee, there was a broad spectrum of people who were on it. And I think that's the best way of dealing with something like this, because then you get much more buy-in from the very beginning. And so I think that, we've talked about that before in some of the meetings with Paula and stuff, so.
I just, I think that's a good idea. It's a, it's a format that's worked for us before, when we've looked at some other issues facing the town. So I'd support that. Anything, Paul or Paula?
I imagine you'd want the code director asking...
I, I mentioned that, yeah, sure.
You might want to approach somebody from the law director's office, to see where the legalities stop or start. I mean, you may as well have a foundation of what is possible or impossible. I mean, flogging and pillories does not work, as far as I know, in the civilization. But at the same time, how's the, you know, we have, we have issues of how to, like snow, for instance, snow, you know, as far as I know, we can't throw a ticket out there, and it has to go through the court system, and most of the time, it's hard to actually find the snow when court comes around. So that would be a suggestion as well, just some kind of basis on how, you're talking about procedure, how, what procedure is actually possible to do.
And where new ordinances may be required.
I would have no doubt about that, that would help, yes.
Yes.
This sounds like a great idea, and something that I think the city could benefit from in, in a lot of different ways. In terms of the composition of the committee, I have one concern that, in general, this committee will probably be raising concerns about how city code enforcement has been going for the past few years. And so I think having the code director could potentially keep the committee from being as bold or making as strong statements they might. It might not. It all depends on who's on the committee and how those interactions go. But I would just throw out a suggestion to consider possibly someone else from the administration sitting in that role, but that's for other people to decide.
I would assume you want some kind of expertise. On the other side, I don't hear your discussion, are you going to have students on board? I assume you're going to find some students to put in this mix, right?
We can find some.
And maybe some landlords?
Absolutely, a landlord, yeah.
Again, very similar to the, the sign ordinance, the signed ad hoc committee, who's basically landlords and, you know, a mix.
Right.
And there was, there was a student on the sign, you know, so I, that's, I think that's a good model, to try to, to get people from across the spectrum, across from the different neighborhoods, and I think having somebody from the law director's office makes sense. I would argue that you have to have somebody from the code enforcement, because they know the, the issues inside and out, and they have one view, and if they're being told, and in a discussion format, that it's not coming across that way, then that's educational for them.
For everyone, for everyone.
So.
I, I would like to say I agree with that completely. I think it's important to have someone from code enforcement be there as the expert, but I'm curious as to who would chair. I'm assuming that...
I think that council will chair.
Will chair, and I think that's important as well. So you've got, so we're able to kind of parse things out, and look at things objectively, as opposed to, you know, any particular entity having vested interest in making sure some agenda was pushed through, so this is, I like this, this is, works.
Thank you for your interest in tackling this, it's been an issue, it's been, I mean, the mayor first ran his first campaign on some of the concerns that he had with code, so it's been an issue, it's been around for a while, obviously. I would encourage, again, the ad hoc committee to have diversity, students and/or people that are renting or tenants, not just homeowners, landlords, business personnel, because code affects all of us, and each one of us has a different perspective on what may be broken or what might not be working, and what's working well, because there are a lot of things that are working, just not all of it. Thank you.
Do you all have a timeframe in mind?
Well, I know with the, the sign committee, it took a good six or seven months, if not longer, really, to kind of work through what all the issues are in the meetings and those kinds of things. So I'd like to see something up and running, starting, you know, sometime in June, if we could get this group together, and start looking at what we need to do.
Good, thank you.
Well, and with, I would put one caveat, with the, understand that maybe in August, late August, September, when school starts, that there may be some students on board, so they're, a free flow.
There may be some students we can find this summer.
Right. Students are moving into my neighborhood.
Yeah, moving in right now, yeah, yeah. So I didn't know if there was anybody, or maybe wanted to speak, I don't know.
Anybody, I think council has expressed their opinions in favor of putting forward this committee. We have quite an audience here tonight, are there residents who want to speak? We are beginning a process.
Bill Sefranik, 34 Grosvenor Street. Thank you.
He didn't sign in.
Quick, ticket him.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
Okay. Second agenda item under planning development is the water monitoring ordinance. In front of you, you have a packet with the, pretty much finalized draft language for the resource extraction, waste disposal, monitoring, and mitigation program that I am proposing to set up for the city of Athens. As we know, one of the main purposes for the government, for the city government, is to ensure the health and safety and welfare of its citizens. And if we've said over and over, more times, then people probably want to hear... And if we've said over and over, more times than people probably want to hear, is that that's, our water system is one of the main items that we need to protect for long-term sustainability for the citizens of Athens. The purpose that this monitoring and mitigation program would then be to ensure the health and safety of the citizens of Athens by installing a program to monitor such things as groundwater and surface water contamination, water to monitor air pollution standards of such facilities as waste disposal, hazardous waste disposal, natural resource extraction sites, which could mean oil or gas drilling, fracking sites, those sort of things, that would occur in the city boundaries in the city of Athens. Not only that, it would also to cover the extraordinary expenses that occur with these sort of industries, such as police and fire protection for such sites. It's usually, police and fire need to have upgraded equipment so that can deal with hazardous waste or other types of waste that may have certain types of ingredients in it, such as benzene, those sort of things. They may need new training to keep them up to standards to be able to be first responders to that. Such things as increase in insurance premiums that the city may be seeing because the increase in liability that may occur from these sort of industries in the city of Athens. Such things also, engineering increases in engineering costs, legal costs and professional services that may require, that result from these sort of operations. And also to make sure that the, these facilities pay attention to state and federal regulations. And so to try to make sure that the industry is paying for their fair share of all these services that would be provided by the city. That's why this disposal monitoring and mitigation program is being put forward tonight. It's, I would see it as a new chapter in the Athens City Code. First section is purpose, there's definitions, and then the requirements, the actual requirements of the, did you guys get copy?
No.
Sorry. So one of the, one of the sections is required background information of the operators of the facilities. That includes listings of key employees, listing of all administrative operators and what type of capacity they are serving the operation, supervisory especially. Let's make sure that people know who to contact if there's problems, or if there's some kind of information that's needed by emergency responders or other city administration. Also, background information would be required, would be administrative enforcement orders that the company may have had, employees that have had administrative enforcement orders, and listing of all such administrative enforcement orders, civil actions or criminal actions pending at the time of submission of the application for a PERMA for the facility in question. And these would be required to be updated within 30 days of any changes. The next section is talking about requirement of spill planning and notification. Such facilities would be required to put in a spill response and notification plan to the city. And that notification of spills must be reported to the Service Safety Director within one hour of said spill or discovery of spill. Right now, state law is very wishy-washy about when local administrators are told about spills. This is about our water, our streets, and our air we're talking about. Besides, first responders need to know what they're dealing with when they go. So they need to also know of the plan. All these facilities need to have a plan, as we've seen in certain industrial accidents that have occurred lately. When you don't have a plan, there could be casualties. The next section is authority for testing of disposal waste that would go into any such facilities. This would allow the city or its designates to remove a sample of drilling waste, of any container of hazardous waste or brine or other oil and gas substrates that are delivered to the sites. This does not necessarily mean the city will be testing every single barrel, but they reserve the right to be able to go in and draw tests. Next one is required of a stable benign tracer to be injected into the disposal sites. This is to make sure that any hazardous waste or oil and gas waste that are injected into a facility could be monitored and that with a benign tracer, if something hits our monitoring wells, you can trace it back to the source. Next one is public notification and monitoring programs request. This is a public hearing to inform the citizens of what is, what is being proposed. This is not to say that they can or cannot drill or have a hazardous waste site or a disposal facility within the city itself. That is a state permitted process. This is not saying that we are permitting them. It's for public knowledge and to make sure that we know is what is going on. Once again, more knowledge is important, especially when we're talking about first responders. The monitoring fee, the monitoring fee shall be for extractive resource facilities shall be a yearly fee. That shall not be less than $10,000, but no more than $30,000 per extraction site. And we've gone about this from looking at all the increases in cost to the city through insurance, training, road conditions, enforcement, equipment, those sort of things. Currently, we've spent a certain amount of money on our monitoring well, so we know how much money would be needed. This would allow for monitoring well to be put at the site if we deem that that's the way to do it. And also that we can increase the air monitoring. That's not currently being done in the city of Athens. A fee of five cents per barrel of substance that's delivered to be injected into a hazardous waste or a gas and oil waste disposal site will be enforced on a monthly basis. This will be from a, forms that will be filed with the Service Safety Director on the manifest that's required monthly. This will be, Athens Monitoring, Mitigation and Environmental Account will be set up to go, where all this money will go into. That money will only be available to run this program, to put money away for mitigation processes, if there are mitigation processes, or for protection in the future. We all know that sometimes corporations or companies may have a spill, they may go bankrupt, and then usually the corporation, the community is held with the cleanup costs. Right now, I don't think the state is really putting enough money aside for that. So this is making sure that it's covered within our community so we can make sure that any processes or problems that are coming from these facilities are covered. There's a review by City Council or the administration for the fee amount, costs go up and costs go down, that the forms will be, where the forms will be stored, and the public requirements for sunshine, and delinquency and penalties and interests if they do not fulfill the requirements of this program. And so, put it forward for your review. This has gone through extensive legal review. Pat has gone through it with fine-tooth comb. He said that it's legally defensible in many ways. Currently, there is many, there's four or five different court cases that have gone through to the Supreme Court, allowing cities to have programs similar to this. One is Oregon, City of Oregon, that has a hazardous waste disposal site. And this, that's the original court case that fulfills many of these, allows for many of these sort of things. It's establishment of, it's, my opinion's taking back our home rule. We can't, right now, we can't say with permitting, we cannot say, you can't, the city, the state cannot permit for, they can basically give a permit to a hazardous waste site, an injection well, an oil and gas disposal site, a fracking site, a regular oil drill, drilling site. That is at the state, that is the permitting at the state, has been found in the latest court case that's now on appeal, that we cannot zone that out of existence. And so, however, we can take the, our rights, make sure our health and welfare is protected for the people of City of Athens by instilling a mitigation and monitoring program. Any questions? I know it's a lot of words, but.
Chris, I want to thank you because this has been under review and discussion for quite some time. And I think all the areas are covered really well. And I think it's good for the public to know, again, you sort of mentioned it, but that this is not, we're not necessarily reinventing the wheel here. This has been done in other municipalities with waste, hazardous waste. And we just, again, want to continue to have as much in place in our community to protect our people that we know is legally happening in other places in Ohio. And we just want to be on top of that. So we also know that if this was to be passed here in Athens, other communities will use this as a template for their own communities. So we're kind of ahead of the game here in Athens in terms of being the leaders in this area. So again, I want to thank you for all your hard work on this.
I too want to thank you. I know there's a lot of hard work in here. I actually would like to see something pushed even a little bit further, not necessarily in this chapter, but maybe a follow-on chapter. One of the things I've mentioned several times is the fact that, as you all know, we are a city that our wastewater treatment plant accepts septage. And my concern has always been septage that could potentially be contaminated unknowingly, yet having a monitoring and mitigation program to maybe accompany that entity here in the city of Athens, if possible.
I think Andy's very-
Yeah, and I believe Andy is very proactive about that.
He's very on top of it, and he knows, I mean, this, with all the increased money that we are spending on it, he's going to even be more. He does do inspections now, so I agree. Because it's not only this sort of waste that would be a concern to the wastewater treatment plant, there'd be other things, you know, something with a lot of bacteria and stuff could mess up our little system. So he does, he's very protective, I think.
And I think something important we learned at our roundtable on Friday was that, you all read about that in the news, was that when air, citizens, whether it's a citizen group or a municipality speaks out about what they are concerned about and what their expectations are, things improve. And for instance, we learned with the injection well site where there was quite a bit of concern last summer and through the fall, they are now, for some reason, not getting waste from Pennsylvania, for instance. Now, was that because of those protests? I don't know. But it just put that facility at a level where people became more concerned about what was coming in and out of there. So I think when we step up to the plate and make these statements and set out these expectations, that says to people, industry, whomever, corporations, that we are, you know, we're watching and we're paying attention. And I think that's a forward-thinking way to look at this. And that's where we are. I'd like to thank you particularly too, yes, for looking out for the safety of our community by moving this legislation forward. And then also for the designation of fees and a fund because of the potential stress that it could have on our infrastructure. And as we all know, just looking at the appropriations that come through every week and, you know, upgrades to things, we know how expensive it is. And, you know, increased usage of roads and other facilities, increased, potentially increased use of staff, city staff, the safety, Water Department, police and fire, they'll all take a toll.
Athens is pretty well, pretty compact within our boundaries. Does this reach out?
No.
Does this go into action to protect us when our water supply is threatened?
This is within the jurisdictional boundary of the city of Athens only. And that's all as City Council can do to do this sort of thing. Like our sewer fees or maybe our garbage fees, you know, they do not, when we set up certain things unless we have a contract with them, do not impact outside of our city boundaries. So this is only within city boundaries. Now, that doesn't preclude the county from being able to figure out how to implement something like this, or a health district, or another entity like Logan or any Nelsonville. They, this will be out there for them to-
To review.
To review and digest.
Sounds good.
Do you guys have any? I mean, we've been discussing this on and off.
I'm having a hard time envisioning where this would actually be permissible in the city, an extraction of a natural resource and the whole mining that went through many years ago back behind Hope Drive and so.
Yes, visually, but, you know, there are parcels of property that potentially, you know, we know-
You know-
Wellhead. In our Wellhead. In our Wellhead. In our city area. Yeah, I mean, better safe than sorry, right?
I understand. I mean, I thought we already changed some legislation to protect the Wellhead Protection Area that we did, we did last year, so.
On the other hand, I'm aware of the fact that, remember that all state property was being reviewed for potential shale gas development.
Yep.
All property, including university material. So it's, although it's not on, in the front runner, it's always there as a possibility.
I just want to say, I like the idea, but I think we need all the tools we could possibly get in our toolbox just in case. Better to be safe than sorry. So I'm all for this. Let's do it.
First reading.
I'll just, I'll need the X's. I'll pull them because I didn't know what certain numbers to put in there.
I'll go the one in the chapter.
And I have, Pat Lang said that he may have some small changes. I will bring those forward. But this has been under pretty, pretty extensive legal review. I feel pretty confident about it. Thank you. I don't have any miscellaneous.
No miscellaneous at this time? Okay, we have City and Safety Services Committee, Chairman Butler, do we have anything coming from you?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that some of the issues that might have fallen under this committee were covered in finance and personnel, but we can double-check with the administration. Is there anything else?
No, I believe that as well. Just kind of rolled them into other committees that were-
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay. Administration, anything else?
Nope.
Did everybody sign our calendar or?
In the process of checking.
Okay, it is 11 minutes after eight, is that all? And we will call this meeting adjourned.